Everyone, thank you for joining us and welcome to the town hall. My name is Oakland Lucage and I'm the operations coordinator at the OVA. And I am joined here by a few of my colleagues. We have Suzanne Wallace, who's the manager of beach programs. Kelvin Chang, who's the operations lead. Alicia Lytham, who's the director of operations and Jane Lubicich, who's the executive director. Just a few things before we get started. Sure already know this is a town hall. An update on outdoor programs. We'll cover a little bit of return to play protocols. Some overview on the upcoming beach season, hopefully, and cover a little bit of grass opportunities coming up. If you do have any questions during the presentation, please feel free to just drop them in the chat and we'll cover them as we go. There will also be a Q and A session at the end of the presentation. So without wasting any more time, I'll pass it over to Suzanne if you want to share the screen and then Joe can start talking with some RTP updates.
Okay, well, they're getting that rolling. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. I'm just going to take a brief piece into the, as Oakland said, the return to play. Did you want to go over anything else Suzanne before I jump in or just do you want me to go? Okay, awesome. Thank you. So we did have a town hall a couple of weeks ago on return to play, which covered off a little more detail into the government framework and the colors. So please feel free to go back and look that recordings now on the website. And always contact us if you have any questions. Because as you know, our return to play, uh, obviously stay at home. So we are currently with the third wave upon us trying to race and get vaccines done. We all know that at this time, there can't be any plane happening. So it is illegal to gather indoors. You may leave your home for the essential reasons. Exercise is included in that, but no team sports indoor and outdoor at this time are allowed. And outdoor gathering limits do keep in mind are a very small number and limited to five. So but what I did want to point out here, in which we did cover off in our last town hall was once the stay at home order is lifted, regions will return back to their their color coded, the government framework with the color codes. So let's hope, you know, we're actually moving back into right back into the, you feel like you win the lottery when you get to be green. But yellow and orange, those three colors can all play. So if, as long as there's no changes to the government regulations, which we will obviously keep an eye on as we do, that training and gameplay, as long as a physical contact can be avoided, happens in orange, yellow and green. In red, training and skill work can happen, but you must maintain a physical distance. So that's something where volleyball can return in those colors. One thing that they just changed as they were easing some restrictions in lockdown in gray, just before the stay at home order came in, was they did add in outdoor gatherings in gray was increased to 10. And you can do some skill work and practicing. But you must maintain a physical distance of three meters. So just keep that in mind that even if your region does return to gray, those are the government regulations that some skill work can happen, but physical distance is increased to three meters. Also, always check with your public health. Your local public health may have different rules, may have different regulations. Even the facility or where you're doing that activity, those rules always must be followed. So just be diligent with with that piece. So if you do have any questions around that, there is our town hall that's posted. Also, please feel free to shoot us an email on any of those. And we will continue to monitor the government regulations. And let's all cross our fingers that stay at home is lifted by the end of this month and some regions can get back into some action. I did want to also stress that as much as we really would like to return with less restrictions, it's not obviously likely as things are difficult. But just to keep in mind, as Kerry McDonald presented in our last town hall, the vaccines are rolling out, but in order to reach herd immunity, we need 70% of the population immunized. Right now, what we're hearing obviously from the government is that even by the end of April, we would only be at 40% of adults being immunized. And keep in mind also that it doesn't include anyone under 16. So that's something where we know all of our protocols will still need to be followed. So we have had questions of do waivers still need to be completed? Do we still need our COVID safety officers and committees? The answer is yes. So we will continue to keep that information updated on our website. And we will continue to have town halls and keep you updated. But and as anything, anytime you have questions, just let us know and we'll go from there. And I will let the team jump in with the rest of their outdoor update. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
No problem.
Okay, my computer will cooperate. We'll move to the next slide. There we go. Okay, so um, we did have a return to play update as well as outdoor season update at the beginning of March. So where we did present that we will be building off, obviously, the friendlies from last year. And then we're hoping to pivot, obviously, at some point if we can to fold the events, but as of right now, we will still be going with our half day events. So we have our two waves throughout Saturday and Sunday. Um, the only difference this year is that we will be offering small playoff brackets where athletes can earn points and have rankings. And there will be a modified, hopefully, Ontario championships to fall in line with our government regulations. And we also have to, as Joe mentioned, return all over or follow all of return to play protocols and public health guidelines to have our events run smoothly. And then we are working with quite a few different hosts this year. They typically have run satellites for us in the past, but everybody will be running OVA beach tour events. And we'll go through the list of locations in a couple of slides. And then at the end, Kelvin will just touch on what we discussed previously is we are looking to develop some grass volleyball leagues and tournaments across the province. So we'll give you an update about that as well towards the end. So with all the fun handbook and what's new documents, they have been posted on our website. So you can definitely check out our resource area of our website for these documents. Some key highlights though, that we want to stress is that one thing we did say in the previous town hall is that OVA competitive memberships would be required. That is not the case anymore until Ontario championships registration opens up. So only beach recreational memberships will be needed at this time to participate in OVA beach tour events. And also this year, after much discussion with our beach officials chair or referee chair, excuse me, there are going to be no technical timeouts during games this year, but each team is allowed one timeout per game. Medical timeouts have been reduced to three minutes in length instead of five minutes in length. And that only has to do with the time. Because we're only there for a short amount of time, our medical timeouts have decreased in length as well. All games are self wrapped. And there is an OVA referee onsite for rule clarification or any questions. And referees will be refereeing some of the playoff matches throughout the day as well. We did touch on this last time as well, just to bring to your attention, age divisions are based on chronological age. And if you are a part of the extended age class, an exemption process is in place where you just have to contact us to get further clarification. And you can always refer to section 2.1 of the handbook and it has all the full details there. So down to the fun part. Our schedule has been posted. I'm actually just going to take you guys right now to our website. Hang on one second, sorry. There we go. Um, so this is our website. So if you go to at the top under competitions and then you click on beach and then under beach tour dates and registration, you will now see just a very small guideline of what the events will be. So like I said, the two waves, morning wave will start at nine, afternoon will start at 1:30. And then all registration will be done on MRS. Registration is not currently open. And we will probably not be opening registration until we get further clarification after the stay at home order is is done, just so we know what areas are going into which colored zones. Like we said, you have to be in at least the orange zone to have events take place. So we'll see what happens with further instructions from the government. But all of our locations are listed here. We have 13 right now that we are using. All you have to do is just click on, you'll see the arrow next to one of the locations and then all the dates and then the times and age groups being offered during those waves are listed. So it'll list all the way down. One thing I will mention is that we just unfortunately received word from Toronto that Ash Bridges is not going to be available until at least July. So you'll notice that those have been updated with those dates. The other thing I will mention is that Ontario championships is listed here at Ash Bridges Bay. These are tentative. We'll talk about it a little bit later as well, but I just want to make it very clear that these are tentative. We'll probably get some wording in there by the time registration opens, just to clarify if they are going ahead or not. So you can find all of that there. And like I said, too, under our resources, the handbook and the what's new document is already updated. So I will just jump back to our PowerPoint slide. So registration, like I said, might not open till the end of the month. We'll see what kind of comes based on government regulations. We realize that if some venues are able to host events that first weekend, which is May 15th, 16th, we will have registration open ASAP. We already have the links created. It's just necessarily getting it up online. Again, just orange to green. Those are the only venues that we are able to utilize. So if anybody is in red, white or lockdown, those venues will not be used and we will not have registration open for those venues. The other thing to keep in mind too is we will be putting some policies. It might be venue specific. Just one example is that London, our facility in London can only have participants in the same color zone or better. So if London gets to yellow, they unfortunately would not be able to have participants from orange or higher play at their venue. So any of those specific venue policies, we will be posting it on the website under each venue. We are strongly encouraging all teams to not travel to play within their area and only recommending that you play in one event per weekend. So just a recap, we did talk about this last time, but just in case there's anybody new on the call. It also is in our handbook, but just to kind of go over it, this is our event format.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. Before we move on, there is a quick question that came in about, you know, areas and zones. Will the OVA staff be keeping track of which colored zones players home base is versus where they're choosing to play?
Yeah, so if there is, we will be monitoring, obviously, we can see which players are registered for which events. So we will be monitoring where those players live. So again, players from a red zone and higher, unfortunately, they wouldn't be able to participate. So we will be monitoring that. And if there is anything in there that doesn't quite meet what the venue is asking for, we will reach out to those players individually.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anything else Oakland or is that?
No, that's it for now. You kind of just related to what we're talking about too.
Okay, perfect. So event format, it'll be small pool play or pools of three or four with small playoff brackets. So all teams were hoping to be playing all at the same time. So therefore we have limited teams sitting off. Like I said, they will be self wrapped and two waves per day. So pool play matches are two sets to 21 or 30 minutes, whichever comes first. Playoff matches are best two out of three, so 21, 21, 15 or 45 minutes. AM wave starts at 9:00 AM, PM wave starts at 1:30. There is no difference in points based on venue. So therefore rankings after the playoff bracket, you will receive your points based on those final results. Cancellation weather policy. So this is one we did discuss last time, but I just want to reiterate is that if there is any lightning, unfortunately, we will be cancelling the event immediately. So there's no delay we can hold off for just because we don't want players and parents guardians to be hanging around the facility. And also with the two waves, unfortunately, we just don't have the the time to push back. So depending on where we finish or where it happens, you could either change to another location at a later date. Or there would not be a refund at that time, just depending on how many matches you get in. So we've touched on this a couple of times, but our Ontario championships at this time at Ash Bridges Bay is obviously tentative. We are considering more of a regional approach. If we are not able to have multiple or large gatherings for everybody at one venue. We are looking at those two weekends. So the July 31st, August 1st and August 7th, 8th weekends, those are the age splits we would like to have. We have looked at some options to where we use maybe three or four different venues across the province. And we have those age divisions playing on those specific weekends. So there are some options for us, but we will not be making a decision on this until probably the end of June. It should still give you guys about a month to plan accordingly. But we just don't feel comfortable based on where we are right now and making a decision as of this time. So we'd rather wait a little bit and see if we can offer something to all the players. Nationals is still set for the weekend of August 20th to 22nd in Toronto. We will convey any information from Volleyball Canada about the event. As of right now, it is still scheduled to go. So at this time, I'm actually going to turn it over to Kelvin. He's going to talk about our grass volleyball.
Sues, before we move over to grass, there's a few questions that came in related to. So one was related to the staff overseeing what colors on athletes are from. And they're asking, what if the athlete is not actually staying at at their home? So their living like address is different than their MRS address. For example, they've moved from their Toronto to their cottage. Should we, should they register their new address?
I'm going to turn that over to Alicia or Joanne answer because I think that's a more encompassing.
Question. So yes, if they could just either update their address in the system or submit that in through the office. And then this is what I'm going to put it on to. They can submit it to Kelvin in Oakland. So we'll set up that piece. Yeah, no, that's, that's a really fair question. And I know that's even been happening with some of the indoor athletes where they're finding the, the athletes actually relocating. So they can either train or play. And of course, that makes perfect sense. The athlete can play, let them play, and it makes sense and it, and they're doing something that keeps, you know, risks mitigated and keeping them safe. So we'd rather have them establish their place to play and stay with it for the for the duration.
For just for ease of, I think, our staff and also administering this, I would just ask them that everybody updates their MRS address. I mean, that's where we're going to be looking to where everybody has registered and where everything is coming from. So as long as their MRS address is correct. And that's where they are residing, then that's what we will go by.
Okay, thank you. Another question. What is the policy if an athlete and their beach partner live in different regions? Are they permitted to play in both regions? What if one of their, one of the athletes lives in red and the other one lives in green? Can they still play in the green region?
No. So participants who live in red or higher are unfortunately unable to play. So if it comes down to like an orange and a yellow or orange and a green, you know, that is fine, but you still have to adhere to the venue policy. So if both players don't meet the venue policy, let's just say London as the example, just because we did discuss it. If they both don't meet that criteria, then the team wouldn't be able to play. But there's no issues for us having players from different zones playing together.
And just to clarify, the red zone athletes can train with their athletes from the green or orange or yellow zones. They just can't compete in OVA events. That's just an association wide policy that the board approved back in the fall.
Okay. There's one question here related to Ontario championships. And it says, how many tournaments must you play in in order to be eligible? But and I'll answer that in the chat as well. But the one part that I want to check with you is if they don't get to the colors that allow children to play, any chance that that athlete will be allowed to play in the OCs?
Yeah, so that's one of the decisions we'll probably be making by the end of June is seeing what percentage of venues are able to operate. How many teams we have seen come through? If we don't see that certain percentage, but maybe later in the summer, we see that things are opening up, we'll be making exceptions and exemptions for certain people. But again, that probably won't be a decision that'll come down until later in the summer. But currently, right now, it's three tournaments, just as in normal, say, normal OVA beach tour. So it's three events to be qualified for Ontario championships.
It's regressive.
No, and then I was going to say Ontario championships then qualifies you for nationals.
Yeah, and honestly, it's this remain fluid. You know what I mean? Like it's just this whole year has been crazy and we've always had to continue to pivot and adapt. You know, so it's just going to continue without the on the outdoor side of things. Luckily, the risk factor for outdoor sport versus indoor is less, which is great when it comes to beach and grass volleyball for us. So we're looking forward to getting in better, you know, color zones of the province eventually and getting back to the sport again. So remain flexible.
Perfect. And one more question here, Sues. This one is related to kind of the the host of the event. Is the site coordinator responsible for a whistle to indicate 30 minutes, beginning, ending, kind of managing that time for during during the tournament?
Yeah, so the host will be responsible for watching the time. Typically, what we did for friendlies last year was just calling out last serve. Maybe even giving teams like a one minute warning almost. You know, the official might even assist who's onsite. Sorry, the referee who's onsite might assist with, you know, blowing the whistle at the end of time. But they will usually be given notice for when the 30 minutes is up.
Awesome. Okay, no, no further questions right now.
All right. Thank you. All right, Kelvin, you are up.
Awesome. Thanks, Sues. So the past few months, we have been in contact with different cities and towns across the province about permitting sports fields for grass volleyball. We are hoping to run grass volleyball leagues and tournaments this summer to provide an opportunity for our athletes to play the sport. Some of the places we are working with are listed on the slide and we are in various stages of the application process with those cities. If we have, if we are successful in getting permits for the summer, we will be contacting the local clubs depending on where we can get a permit to help us host events. So please stay tuned. And we have also put together a resource for grass volleyball. This rules and guidelines manual includes rule modifications and formats, safety guidelines and best practices, such as how to set up and tear down where to purchase equipment and things to consider if you are planning on offering a grass program this summer. We are putting the final touches on the document shortly and it will be posted on the OVA website for everyone as a reference. If you're interested in hosting grass volleyball in your area, whether you want to do a league or a tournament, please let us know. And we can help you get your program started.
So in typical beach fashion, we are a short and sweet kind of group. That's it for our presentation. If there's any more questions, feel free to put them in the chat. You can always email any of us at any time. And yeah, we can kind of go from there. Oakland, was there anything else that came in? I didn't see.
Not, not at the moment. No, not right now. I'll give everybody a minute or so to type their question. And there was one question those that we had like prior to to today. And it's about organizers and they're wondering if they still need a COVID committee to oversee all things if they're running beach or grass programs this summer.
Yes, so the COVID committee, that's just part of our return to play protocols. So even if it's just your executive or your tournament host, as long as you have that committee there making sure all of our return to play protocols are followed, then that's, that's what needs to be done.
Awesome. And another question, can competitive players still register as rec players until they play their first their first tournament?
Joe, I might turn this over to you because I'm not sure what's happening with the memberships from this year. If there was competitive memberships.
Oh, was there? No, all competitive memberships are being refunded.
Yeah, so all competitive memberships are being refunded. So really, when you go into the system to register for beach events, you will have to purchase a membership. So just make sure you're picking the beach recreational player membership.
Yeah, they'll still have a recreational, so they won't have to repurchase that. Yeah, sorry, I didn't. This is obviously a very odd time because normally the memberships is easy for when they come to beach. They've already registered. So yeah, they'll still have that piece, but if they were only initially like a triode or a volunteer or they didn't purchase their membership, then yes, they would purchase your recreational. Your beach recreational.
Perfect. And another question, do house league programs have to be registered in MRS as well?
Good question. So they're not registered, like it's not the must that they're in MRS, but the opportunity is there to register in MRS because all waivers would need to be completed, not only for COVID, but you also have a Rowan's Law concern as well. And there's concussion protocol that also would need to be signed off on as long as it, as well as a general waiver. So all those forms are in MRS. So if you are looking to do that, just contact who, who are we putting this one with?
Oakland.
Oakland. That's a good one. I like that one. So contact Oakland and he can help you how that would work in MRS. Because there is a house league player option in MRS and then all your paperwork is done. It's organized. You know, you don't have to worry about that and not worry about waivers being signed or even keeping the copies of those waivers. Because it's all been completed and signed off in in MRS and the parent is taking care of that and signed their their documents.
Joanne, just to confirm the cost of that for the house league, it's $3?
I'm don't, I don't recall.
Okay, we'll confirm.
It is something like that is I want to, I don't, might be, it's four, if it's three, but it's, yeah. It covers the insurance, all the paperwork would be done and obviously you don't have to worry about that.
And do coaches still need a full membership for beach programming?
Are they coaching?
So there's no coaching allowed at events, but obviously if they're coaching slash training, you know, not at the events, then that's where the membership will come into play.
Yeah, and that'll be an important thing, right? To make sure that you do have that insurance and that coverage to make sure that you are covered to coach. From there. I think you've had a couple more flying there, Oakland.
If my zone becomes able to compete, for example, changes to orange, can my partner from a green or yellow come to play in my city?
Green, yellow and orange are great. You got like good thumbs up on that one. And then You got like good thumbs up on that one. And then just keep in mind what Suzanne said, there may be some, we may have some facilities um and locations that may be very particular around if they are green, they may only allow green. Um, and that is completely facility uh driven because they are then responsible for their own facilities. So we don't know what those rules are until um the facility releases that to us. Calvin will continue to confirm all the permits and as I said, all of that information will be updated on the website as far as if they have those limits for those um facilities or permitted areas.
Awesome. Um, Joe, another question here. Sue, I'm sure you know Ontario soccer has done some lobbying to encourage the province to consider a safe return to soccer in the summer. Uh, does the OVA or other PSOs have any plans to encourage the province to reconsider the level of restrictions uh in gray and red?
It's a great question. Um, obviously really tough. Um, volleyball is very lucky. Um, I know it sounds really weird at this time, but um we are, volleyball can be played. Um, like soccer, basketball, they've been having a lot of issues because it's very difficult to play their, their sport while avoiding physical contact. Um, so where yellow, I'm going to go, but orange, yellow, green. The, the actual sport and the volleyball, the game can be played modifying the rules to avoid physical contact. So obviously, as you know, we're a return to play protocol, we've put those out. Red and gray, the lockdown areas are tougher zones because there's a lot more risk happening there. Um, and so the way the government regulations are, is that you, they're not allowing the games. So are we lobbying to change that? No, because there's a reason why that's there. Um, we do need to uh limit um any contact, mitigate risks. And we're not, we're not really interested in putting our, our athletes and our coaches at risk and our referees. So uh, we will continue to monitor the situation. Um, we are excited that we have opportunities to play outdoor. Um, we are lucky that we will take this opportunity to get more grass games happening. Um, but I, I mean, you look at that, that's a very tough one to say, let's lobby to get more people playing in red and gray. Um, that's kind of a tough one. It's a tough one to say that that um, you know, is something that um I'm not sitting very comfortable at putting our members at risk. So I think that's, obviously, that's a, could be a, a whole big discussion, so.
So, um, Sues, another question related to the schedule here. Will you have the ability to add extra events at locations that are not yet listed, for example, Ottawa?
Yeah, so we are working with all of our hosts in each city. Um, there's even still a couple of cities that are not on there, but they just don't have uh a very good indication of whether or not they will uh get access to their venue. In terms of Ottawa, right now, probably not um additional days. But I will, I will refer back to that venue and see if there's anything else that has come up. Um, in case the Ottawa does get to the area where we can have more events. But uh it's great to see that people are already excited to play. So that's, that's a positive.
And if you know of any other facilities that we have not historically used enough, like less number of courts that are suitable and deep enough sand and all that fun stuff, reach out to Sues. Because honestly, we want to get as many locations up and running as we can.
Okay, and another question related to the membership piece. Uh, some Tony just wants to clarify that if the athlete had a, a competitive membership for indoor, there's no need to register as a rec membership for beach. Correct, right?
Yeah, Joe's nodding her head. That's correct.
And another question that just came in, if a club has already arranged grass volleyball, would you be looking to expand grass volleyball areas?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay, um, just taking another look here. Don't think there's anything else now. Nothing else is coming up. Again, um, just another reminder that the recording and presentation slides I'm sure will be on the website. Swimming tomorrow, some point. Um, so there's nothing else coming up here, um, crew, so.
Awesome. Well, if there's anything that comes up in the next couple of days, uh, anybody has questions, uh, feel free to email any of us that are here. Um, all of our contact details are on the website and um Kelvin would love to hear from you.
Awesome.
Thanks, everyone.
Don't leave out Oakland.
No.
I already put Oakland under the spotlight before, so then I thought I'd get Kelvin this time.
Yeah, like, let me know if you should keep his hair long or get a haircut.
You can go back to beginning of the town hall sessions when Kelvin had really short hair the year later. It's down here, so. Oh, thanks, everyone, for joining us.
It was nice to see a lot of familiar faces. Thanks so much for joining us.
Good to see you on the beach and grass.
We can't wait to see everyone playing. Good night.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Thanks, everyone.